Good evening, welcome to the School District of the City of Dearborn Board Meeting on August 23rd. The time is 7:08. I call this meeting to order with a roll call. Trustee Mosz, we can't hear you. We still can't.
It's blinking on my side. Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Trustee Sam Berry.
Here.
Trustee Patrick DeAmbrosio.
He is recovering from an appendectomy that happened over the weekend. We wish him all the best.
Trustee Raxane McDonald.
Here.
Trustee Adam Moser Pierre in Pigeon Forge, Tennessee. Trustee Mary Petlishka.
Here.
Trustee Irene Watts.
Here.
President James Thorpe.
Here. Next item?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. President Thorpe will lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, on a shot indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent's update.
Good evening, everyone, Board Trustees, members of the audience, those at home. I would like to start with a moment of silence. I will have the moment of silence, and then I'm going to have some comments that I would like to make, and we have a video. We had the passing of Dr. John Ardis, former superintendent, the age of 75. He died of heart failure after contracting COVID-19. I have spoken to his wife, so I would like to have a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you, everyone. I'll make a few comments. Dr. Ardis started at Dearborn Schools in 2002. I remember it clearly. I was an assistant principal at the time. He already had 35 years of experience in education, and he truly was an educational leader. He was also a part of the implementation of the $150 million bond that was passed just before, prior to him arriving in the district. Couple things I want to mention about his time. He was the superintendent that hired me as a principal at Salina School. Had a tremendous amount of respect for him as an instructional leader. That's what he was. He truly was an instructional leader. He came at a time, if you recall, some of you may recall, No Child Left Behind. I know it very well because I actually studied it for my dissertation, my doctoral research. He came in at a time that we really needed instructional leadership, where there was a conversion in the district from, you know, simply managing to moving forward for the benefit of all students, so that all students could learn. And so that's what he implemented at the meetings, and I remember it. I've now been in part of general administration since 2002. As an intern, I attended in 2001. And he, we all know the two things that I'll say. Some of my early learnings, not only for me, but the district with the strategic plan. That is benefiting us now because, as the board is aware, we've revamped that strategic plan. And he came to me, and I remember it clearly. He came to myself and Ms. Peterson and said, "We want you to co-chair this plan." And I'm like, "Well, why was I chosen?" Well, if you do a good job, you know, there's other positions down the line. Prove yourself. I think he believed in, you know, students first. We didn't call it at the time, but that's what he believed in. He stuck to his principles. The world-class school improvement process that we have implemented and presented on a national level, the pioneer of that was under his leadership. And I remember that as we were implementing, at the time, administrative classroom walkthroughs. And a lot of us in the educational community took to what we called professional learning communities. That started under his watch in alignment with Rick Dufour, that was moving on it at a national level. So he came in at a time that was necessary to lead the district. I had a tremendous amount of respect for him. I also remember talking to him personally about my aspirations for maybe going on to my doctoral degree, and he guided me along the way. Again, he was all about students, put students first. And I have spoken to his family. I've sent condolences on behalf of the board and administration. And I did have a real good chance to message his wife, and actually, we spoke today. And she is appreciative of the recognition and thanked us. And I did, the video we're about to play, she's already received it. So we'll take the time right now to play the video in his honor. But again, he was superintendent from 2002 to 2008. And I remember clearly the leadership that he took at the time, you know, for the instruction in the classroom to meet the needs of all students. So we'll go ahead and play that video.
I am very proud of the staffs and the principals of our schools. I believe every one of them have taken seriously the issue of student achievement and have worked extremely hard to make sure that all students are given every opportunity possible to learn. It's predicated on some very simple beliefs. First belief being that this is about children. This is about children. It's not about adults per se. But it's about children, and it's about helping children to be successful. And that's one of the beliefs that I believe you will see as you walk around the room. It's also predicated on being willing to be accountable. And certainly, that's what we are sharing here, and what you'll see on the sheets that you're working with. And in the final analysis, it's about the teaching that goes on in the classrooms. We do a lot of work to support the teachers. But the teachers make the difference. They're the ones that make it happen in the classrooms. And without them, without their support, without what they do in the classrooms, none of what you see tonight would take place.
Thank you. So we will move along on my agenda items. We have retirements. Again, we want to thank the retirees and congratulate them on their retirement. So Bada Ali, over 26 years of service. Tracy Jones, 30 years of service. Cynthia Slater, 21 years of service. Carol Suarez, 22 years of service. Atri Wilson, over 22 years of service. If we can recognize them now, I'd appreciate it. COVID mitigation is on the agenda tonight. I want to let the board know and the public. We have had multiple, multiple meetings between the crisis team, my executive cabinet, my cabinet, extended cabinet. We've been meeting pretty much all summer. And one of the things that we've said, and we said it last time, is that pending conditions and changes, recommendations may change. And that's what's been happening from the CDC, from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and Wayne County Health Department. And so you'll see some recommendations tonight that we've been discussing. I can tell you that our team strongly recommends the presentation and what is part of it that we're going to be presenting tonight. And we pretty much had a, we went from, in the earlier on, to maybe a 70, 30% to now almost 100% consensus within the team as to which way we want to go. I do want to mention one other thing on agenda item that I don't have on the, in there, but I want to mention all the teacher hires. Ms. Farage and Ms. Hildar Ranny do a great job. I know trustee, President Thorpe and I will be speaking tomorrow. We have, I think, over 100 now. And we did have to move to virtual because of the fact that there's so many staff that we wouldn't be able to necessarily fit within our, you know, rules. So we did, they made the decision, but it's a great thing to see that many teachers coming into the district. I think the, and I can kind of jump onto the enthusiasm, a lot of them, the recruitment of the summer school program. But just, I think, and I appreciate the board approving the contract with the DFT with the letter of agreement, where we have very competitive starting wages, one of the top in Wayne County. So I think that is also helping with our recruitment as well. So I'm going to move along to non-agenda items. I want to talk about the vaccines. As you're aware, we did run a lot of clinics last year for students and staff. We're proud to say we believe we're about 75 to 80% of our staff vaccinated. With staff, we're also allowing now a voluntary submission of the vaccine card because if they would like to be exempt from having the daily sign-in check-in sheet, this is under my OSHA requirement. So we still, as a staff, have to sign in. We don't have any choice in the matter unless you're fully vaccinated. So if it's on record. And so we're, we offered that to our staff recently. We are also looking at running additional vaccine clinics for 12 and over. I know I've talked to President Thorpe, but our team and our nurses, and in fact, Wayne County Health Department reached out to me. We filled out a survey, and I got a communication just today. They want to come into our schools and run vaccine clinics. So I want to say I want to promote. You will see later, a highly, we are highly recommending the vaccine for anyone eligible, both staff and students, as a way to combat COVID-19. So that will continue. The other thing I will say is that the Wayne County will also work with our staff. Some of you may have heard a couple of things. Pfizer now received full FDA approval, so it's no longer emergency approval. Secondly, the county health department, you've heard of the boosters that are coming, because our teaching staff, we're in the 1B category, I believe it's 1B. They received them in February of last year. And so we will start with the boosters, and we'll work with the county, and we'll offer that service to our employees again, once the boosters are available for staff that are eligible to receive that booster. So we're going to work with them as well. And if needed, you recall, we worked with DMC and Henry Ford Hospital, and other groups like Walmart will do that as well. So we're going to continue. I want to mention too that I put in a call to Dr. Hamami. He is the epidemiologist at Wayne County Health Department. He's no longer working with them. He took a pause this summer, but he's very knowledgeable. He was in our weekly reports. The board would receive those reports. It was from him when I would send the out, Wayne County. And I spoke to him today. And he is, if needed, he's willing to come back and work with us, but he was out of town. And he talked to me about the data. He's data-oriented. And he, I explained the recommendations that we were making tonight, and that he fully supports them. He also talked about vaccine rates in Wayne County. We're still under 65%, so that is something that, you know, the epidemiologists and health departments would like to see higher. And 12 and over, the student age in Wayne County, and again, I don't have Dearborn-specific data on that. We're trying to get it. What we have on record is somewhere between 34 to 40% of students eligible in Wayne County. So that's the data he gave me, and he said I could mention our conversation today, so I'm doing that. Summer school, I just want to mention again. I think it was huge, and it's going to lead to possibly other summer schools. This year, we had to do eight weeks. Some of the funding was based on that, but we might look at other models. And when we start looking at some of the ESER federal funding, we want to have that funding for our students and supports. I mentioned it last month, but I can tell you, as I continued the school visits, it really was just outstanding to see what was going on. Creative teaching, and students were so excited in the school. So I want to thank our staff, our leadership. I know Mason Ali-Bazey and the executives really took a lead on putting that together. And I want to thank our outstanding staff, that, over 1,000, that worked in that program. And we're happy that we were able to compensate them at a very fair level. And that will conclude all of my commentary for today.
Trustee Berry.
Dr. Maliko, I don't see Abe, Mr. Mashur, out here. You don't have to answer this question. We can wait for the information. But regarding middle school football, I know last year we planned in the spring, they had a short season. Now we moved it back to the fall. I've had two head coaches from the middle school reach out to me and ask, you know, what happened to that plan? Is Abe out here, Mr. Mashur?
No, I'd have to check with him on, between him and Scott Homm, I'd have to get back to you on the middle school plan.
Please.
Any additional questions for Dr. Maliko?
Trustee Mosz. The summer school, I think, went very well. I've been to a few classrooms. One that had AC, a school that is new, of course, and other schools that did not have AC. And those schools, the teachers and the students were in very, very hot conditions. So it's something to think about for the future as far as ventilation and HVAC for future summer schools as well. It's something that we really need to consider because buildings at the, that old, at the height of summer, were very uncomfortable for teachers, especially that they were wearing the masks the whole time.
Thank you. Trustee Watts.
I've heard from several parents, and they really enjoyed the summer school program. And I was wondering if we could have a report or a summary of what went well in the summer and something that, those items that went well, that teachers really enjoyed, if that's something that we can continue on come fall time? Just to get an idea of if, you know, if we can continue doing that with the curriculum and whatnot.
We were actually planning possibly for a presentation. We did do a survey. Ms. Farage, I think, led it, so we have data as well. It wasn't completed yet. We're still collecting it. But we can definitely accommodate.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just say too, we just, as far as the HVAC, we just discussed that in the finance committee with potential federal funding. Not, it wouldn't necessarily, I don't want to steal anyone's thunder, but since it was brought up, it was a discussion, and we had a good meeting on that with Mr. Wolf.
All right, next item, please.
Recognition, acknowledgements, commendations.
Good evening, all. Just a couple of commendations today to take care of. First, I'll, high school level commendations to Melinda Daklala, Mona Berry, Kevin Bruce, Chris Minor, Kareem Naim, Majid Fadlala, and Osama Badun for their assistance scheduling the Dearborn Public Schools' virtual K-12 high school students. Commendations to Ms. Joanne Harris, Catherine Jaffar, Alexis Newman, and Jean Brackett, Bob Addy, and Ross Grover for their assistance with ordering and organizing supplies and resources for the Dearborn Public Schools' virtual K-12 school. At the middle school, commendations to Dr. Nazmaria Elder, the OL Smith Middle School counselor. Dr. Elder arranged for water bottle donations for the summer school students, and then drove all over town just to pick up those donations. Just another example of staff who go above and beyond. The school staff truly appreciated her efforts. Want to thank everybody for all the extra efforts that they put in here at the Dearborn Public Schools. So many students, so many staffs, doing so many extra things. And we take great pleasure in recognizing them here at this board meeting and look forward to doing it more in the upcoming school year.
Thank you.
Next item?
Acknowledgement of donations. Acknowledgement of donations.
See, this time I didn't leave. I'm getting better. But now, it's the school year's starting, so we'll have students back, so I won't be up here anymore. Which I know a lot of you are breathing a sigh of relief when I say that. Okay, a donation of 80 Little Caesar's Arena water bottles has been offered to OL Smith Middle School by Little Caesar's Enterprises, and they are to be used as incentive prizes for the summer school students. A donate, this one, I think I'm going to try to crash in on this, but I think it's already gone. A donation of 100 Dairy Queen Blizzard coupons has been offered to Smith Middle School by Miss Sisti to be given to Smith's staff and students during summer school in consideration of all that they've done and gone through. A donation of $6,000 has been offered to Lori School by Shell Oil Company, to be used to purchase school supplies for kindergarteners through second grade for the teachers, for those classrooms. And a donation of 50 gift bags containing pens, water bottles, wooden airplane kits. Again, I got to get in on that. And pocket mirrors has been offered to Smith School by Village Ford to be given to students participating in the summer program. Once again, thank all of those who have donated to our district. It really is appreciated, all of those different donations, whether they be big or small. Comes in handy and really makes a difference in our classrooms and throughout our schools. So we thank all of those who make those donations.
Thanks, Mr. Mashur. Next item?
Approval of minutes, approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting, regular period 12, meeting July 26th, 2021, Board Report 21-09. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections, and move approval of these minutes.
So move?
Support. Motion was by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Berry. Trustee McDonald?
I did notice one correction. It's on page three, and it's one paragraph, it's one sentence, and it says that summer school will start on, I believe, September 3rd, and that is the wrong date.
I have one correction also to make.
Yes, trustee Mosz.
Yeah, page 21, it says here that parents reach out to me via email. I may perhaps say that, but they also messaged me through social media. So if we can include that as well. Thank you.
Any additional corrections? All right, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Trustee Berry.
Yes.
Trustee DeAmbrosio. Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Mosz, yes. Trustee Petlishka.
Yes.
Trustee Watts.
Yes.
President Thorpe.
Yes, thank you. Next item?
All right, special reports. Return to school mitigation plan. Mr. David Mistonin, Ms. Fatmae Farage, and Ms. Amy Candace.
To the board members, if it's okay, after the presentation that the district does, I'd like to move straight into citizen participation. So if there's questions from the citizens, then we can come back up at one time and ask any questions. Is that okay? Instead of asking questions right after this presentation?
You're asking for us to withhold our questions until?
Until everyone has a chance to comment, and then we?
Have we hear from the parents?
Right.
Yeah, after.
I have no problem.
That's good. Okay.
That's fine.
Thank you. Go on.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like, before we start, I'd like to welcome all our students, staff, and families back to school for this school year. The name of our presentation for this evening is Mitigation Protocol for Safe Return to School. So the background information is that we all have the same common goal collectively, is to maintain a school environment that supports in-person learning. We all want our students back to school in person and provide public health protections for students, staff, and visitors. We have a crisis committee in the district, like Dr. Maliko mentioned, and this committee consists of executive cabinet, instructional cabinet, both instructional and non-instructional staff, and the union presidents, as well as the nurses, who are experts in the medical field and who can always provide us with advice, especially at this time. So the protocol that we came up with includes layered prevention strategies. And through multiple meetings that went on through the summer and for the past few weeks, several times we've met, we discussed what are the best way to layer specific prevention strategies to come up with a best plan for the safety of our students while we're giving them the opportunity to be with us fully in person. We've used the reported COVID cases in the district and in the region. We've used the recent guidance by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC. And we've also used, we looked around what other districts are doing, especially districts similar to our size. And the approach to layering mitigation measures and giving consideration to the level of community spread is consistent with MDHHS and the CDC recommendations. As you read through them, that you will see that we are consistent in our recommendations. I will cover the instructional part, and then Amy and David will go over what these specific layers are as we go through them. So for fall 2021, which is next week, we expect our students back. We will welcome them, and we are hoping to have everyone back in person full-time. We know that students benefit from in-person learning, and we've experienced that for the last year and a half, and we saw the difference between Zoom learning, remote learning, and in-person learning. And we want them safely returning, full day, face-to-face, five days a week, the full day. We no longer have the flexibility from MDE like we did during remote learning, where we shortened the hours and we had the Wednesday asynchronous. We no longer have that flexibility from MDE. Special and additional emphasis this year, we did some of that last year, but we are doing more of it. And as we speak, there are preparations that are taking place for professional development on social emotional learning and how to embed that on a daily basis with students. Emphasis on small group instruction and accelerated learning through high-quality intensive intervention will be implemented. Now we hear the term accelerated learning more often. It's not only intervention and taking students where they are. It is intervention and acceleration, and we all know that there's a gap in learning, and we need to recover that. We note that the district has revised the school start time, and that was based on multiple years of communications with this board, with the community, with students, and at our level in instructional cabinet and with the principals. So the link is here, and it's also listed on the website with the school start times. Dearborn Public Schools' virtual K-12 enrollment, the deadline was in June, June 8th, actually. We held several Zoom sessions informing the community and also the students on what the school looks like, what the dynamics of the school are. And people had the opportunity to enroll their students. And we still follow boundary line exemption for hardships for the virtual school. We are going to, and we plan to revert to pre-pandemic instructional and grading practices. June 2021 marked the last monthly submission of what we've known as the E-COAL Plan, which is, it stands for Extended Continuity of Learning, that was required by Michigan Department of Ed. And it was discussed with the public through a forum like this in the board meetings on a monthly basis to approve the mode of instruction. June was the end of it. For this year, we go back to normal business in terms of school improvement and plans. For this year, we are implementing something new called Goals by Schools, which is going to come up later, and we will inform the schools about the specifics of that. That is it for now. We have about 550. We have about 550 students in virtual as of now.
Good evening, everyone. I had hoped that you wouldn't need to see me this year. But COVID doesn't want to behave itself, so. So I'm gonna speak to you guys about the community rates and what we're seeing coming out of Wayne County in terms of our positivity rating cases. So this is the data that we had over the last month or so. Positivity rate and the dates, and then Out Wayne County, which is Wayne County minus Detroit. So we do try to separate ourselves out. They have their own health department, so when we report our numbers, we are known as Out Wayne County. And then the state of Michigan. Couple of things have switched recently that we didn't see during the pandemic. And there were times when Out Wayne County's rate of positivity was actually lower than the state's. So making small victories, I suppose. So what we're looking at here is, starting around mid-July, we were appreciating that lower rate of positivity, which was around 3%, 3.6%. Actually, earlier than that, we were nearing low ones. So we really did see a shift in the amount of cases that we were seeing in school. What the nurses have noticed throughout the contact tracing that we've been doing through the last year is what is happening typically in Out Wayne County is reflected right in our schools. So if we're starting to see a drop in cases, we appreciate that here. If we're starting to see it ramp up again, we'll also see that happening between staff and students as well. So we pretty much follow along with the county numbers. And then looking into towards the end of July, we had a pretty big jump there. That is where we anticipate Delta hit, started to show its face here in Michigan. And then again, the next week, we popped up significantly to 6.7%. And then again, the following week, another steep jump to 7.6. So I said, we are climbing Mount Delta, and we are going fairly quickly towards the top. So the rate of Michigan, the state of Michigan numbers are low, lower, or below that there. So we are seeing that there was a continued increase in new cases. But there were, we're beginning to see smaller percentage of jump, which indicates that we may be approaching the peak and that we hopefully will hit that soon. This is also, you know, seeing that we don't have kids in school and teachers back in. So hopefully, you know, we don't increase that number again once we get everybody back into school. So we are praying that we're near the peak of this and hoping with the reentry into school that we won't see too big of an adjustment on that. Okay. Okay, I've got that one here. Okay, so there's two slides on this one. Carrie Kahn put this together. She's our numbers girl, so I guess each one of us has a talent in our nursing group, and Carrie's is data. So she put this together for us, and I think that it shows what we were dealing with in the summer months and what we're looking at now. So looking back at the end of our school year there, we did feel that decrease. So it was a bit exhausting through the year as we were getting notifications of students and staff that were testing positive for COVID. And as we were entering the end of the school year, we were noticing a big drop in the notifications that we were receiving as a team. And so you can see here that we had a low community risk there, which is 2.7% beginning. And I'm forgetting here, oh, the cases per 100,000, which is a benchmark number that we watch, was 32.2. The goal of those cases is to get us, or 10 or below. So we got close. We were getting there, but it kind of goes up and down. So low rate of positivity with a moderate case rate. And then moving through the summer, we were at 2.1 and then dropping to 1.6. And that wonderful 1.1%, which was the lowest we'd seen since the start of this, was around the end of June. We had a slight increase that next week, but I'm told that was a data dump. So there was additional data that was brought into that number, which brought that one up. So we kind of, that was the outlier number. And you can see there between 1.1% and then the next week, which was 1.6. So this 2.9% is, was more of a data, a catch-up on data. And then this is where you can see the difference. So looking back to when your last Board of Education meeting was, it was 7/26, so the 26th of July. And then the numbers that we would have had available to us at that time would have been the 7/18 through the 7/24 numbers, because the published numbers don't come out until Tuesday. So our board meetings are the day before. So looking at that, we are still in a relatively low rate of positivity at 3.4%, moderate case rate. And then Delta came in, end of the month. We had a big jump, about 4.5%, and then we saw substantial jump in the case rate. So that moved us from a moderate spread, which is where we pretty much stayed, to we started seeing significant spread. So that case rate jumped up. And then the following week, again, 6.4% with a substantial increase on the case rate. And in the last two weeks, we've seen another jump, 7.4 and then 7.7. And that moved us into the high category for case rate. So this, my talks with the Health Department indicate that the last two weeks here, the cases have been all Delta. So prior to that, even in these increases that we had in the weeks before that, the UK variant was still our primary virus that we were seeing here. And that's the one that was causing us issues in the spring. And then, so we held out for a little while here in Michigan, thinking that through June and most of July, we didn't see very many cases of Delta in Wayne County, and then it blew up. So that's where we are right now with a 7.7 rate of positivity and a high case rate. More? Is that, I'm done? So I'm just gonna give you a little summary. This is off the pages here, but I did reach out to the Health Department to get a summary of where we were at today. So what we're seeing probably for case rates coming tomorrow is we're gonna still see an increase of about 5%. So the numbers will be up again, but at a rate of about 5% in the increase. What he said is that this is the smallest increase we've seen in five weeks. The three weeks prior to that, that jump was 77%. So we are beginning to slow down, which indicates that we are reaching our peak here in Michigan, or at least in Wayne County. That's where we're getting our numbers from. So we also expect with that case jump of 5%, we will see an increase in the rate of positivity, but we are hoping again for a small margin of increase. All Delta cases for the last week, they did not identify any new variants or variants of concern that they'd seen in the past. Breakthrough rates still remain low at about 1%. And the vaccine, or those that are vaccinated, it's been still holding out and preventing significant illness and hospitalization as well as deaths. So the vaccine is providing that protection that we were looking for. Our ICU rates and inpatient rates remain stable or average, so that's good for us. Our neighbors in the South are not appreciating that same number. So so far, Michigan, we've been relatively stable or average. The median age of the positivities, I don't have the number right in front of me, but it would be mid-adults, so in the 30s, low 40s. That's where we're seeing the primary transmission. Yeah, let's see, that was it. Oh, and when we're pulling this data, so we are using the CDC with the rates that they're showing are similar to ours. But we look to my Safe Start data for most of ours because the CDC doesn't separate Detroit from us. So Detroit could have a higher rate than we do, so that's why we've been turning more towards our state rates, which give us a breakdown between Detroit and Out Wayne County. So it's just a bit more accurate for what we're seeing in our own community. That's it.
So just to refresh the board's memory, this was a slide from the July meeting and kind of just points out that, you know, we knew that this, as we've learned over the past 16 months, you know, things change. And because things change so much and so rapidly, we have to keep flexible in everything that we do and in all the decisions that we ultimately end up having to make. So our plan to keep students in school and keep Dearborn students there in the classroom is, as was pointed out earlier, it's a layered prevention strategy. So the easiest way to think about this is, so if I had a bucket of ice water in front of me and I stuck my hand in it, of course, my hand would get cold. If I put a dish glove on, a rubber glove, that would keep my hand from getting wet, but it'd probably still get cold. But if I put on a warm glove and then put on a rubber glove, I'd have that dual layer and then put my hand in there. It would keep my, it's a layered approach. It's a layered approach to safety. So we do this in all kinds of different areas, where we take on multiple layers of precautions. No one thing, we know that no one thing is going to solve a problem. But we do know that if you approach it with multiple factors, you are, stand a much better chance of being successful. So that's why we will start with this layered approach. Part of that approach will be a universal indoor masking requirement for students and staff and parents, regardless of vaccination status. As required by federal and state agencies, masks will be required on all school buses. Masks are not required for outdoors, we know that. We see that a lot. Also, we'll be doing seating charts for classrooms, buses, and lunchrooms. And this will help with contact tracing. Our nurses are very familiar with that. So if a student does get sick, it's important to identify those close contacts that are around that student. So if we do the seating charts, if we do that for the classrooms and on buses and lunchrooms, it'll be easier for us to identify those students. We've been doing this already, this is nothing new. It's part of that layered approach that we've been doing all along and will continue to keep on doing. We also know that bringing back 20,000 students into our schools, we'll be able to social distance somewhat, but we know that very likely there'll be a lot of situations where three feet is what we'd like to do, but we won't be able to do that everywhere. But that will be the That will be the, what we'll be trying to do in the classroom. We have a large concentration of students all gathered in a smaller area. There are a lot of other precautions that are part of our layered protection strategies. Of course, increased ventilation. With our Operations Department, we are fortunate. We have HVAC experts on staff. They're part of our staff, so they're able to get in, inspect all of our heating and cooling equipment, make sure that they're all running efficiently. We also, as talked about earlier, is promoting vaccinations. We know that vaccinations are one of the best ways to slow the spread of COVID-19 and prevent it from spreading around our community. We'll continue to work with Wayne County Health Department, and they monitor COVID situations and data points, and we'll continue to seek their guidance as we have done for the past 16 months. So wanted just to give a quick example of the importance of masking in schools and something that's tied to it. So we are required, if a student is, were to get COVID-19, we do the contact tracing, and then students would have to quarantine for a certain number of days. So if you had three or four students who were all sitting less than three feet apart, and they had the mask on, or they were three feet, at least three feet apart, they had masks on, one of the students was to get COVID-19. The other students would be identified as close contacts. But if all those students had masks on, only the student that actually has COVID would have to quarantine. The other two students would not have to quarantine. So again, this plan is all about keeping students in school. I think there's been some recent reports, news reports, that have shown that there are some schools in other parts of the country that are having to quarantine literally hundreds of their students just because they're close contacts with other students who have COVID. So by masking, it will help in not having to quarantine as many students. Just the opposite is true. If the students are all gathered together without masks, then they all would have to quarantine. So we begin this year with a mask mandate. And we will continue to assess the conditions in our community. Factors that we will be looking at are transmission rates, obviously, county and city health conditions, hospitalization rates, vaccination rates, and of course, the approval of vaccination for elementary-age students. We would, you know, as Dr. Maleko pointed out, we highly encourage everyone who is eligible to get that vaccination. I don't think that All of this information is going to be up on our back-to-school website, our main page of the Dearborn Public Schools. You'll see a link called Back to School 2021, and you can access some of this information on that site. Again, you know, all of these are a layered approach to keeping kids safe, keeping our staff safe, keeping our community safe, and keeping kids in school, in front of teachers, in the classroom. There is no better education for our students to be in a classroom with the awesomely incredibly talented professional teachers that we have here in the Dearborn Public Schools. And we know that we want our students to be in that classroom with them. Doing that is going to take multiple layers of effort, multiple layers, multiple precautions. No one thing is gonna do it. And we know we can't do everything. It's just, that's just not realistic. But we do know that if we do as many things as we can, we will keep as many people safe as we can. And that's really what this is all about. Thank you.